Good evening. I call to order this September 21st meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council. Pursuant to the policy and procedures adopted by the city council relative to virtual meetings, I've determined that it's not feasible for the city council and I to meet together physically. And due to the safer-at-home order, all council members are participating virtually. Council members will vote by roll call on each of the items. A council member will be recognized, they will raise their hand, and state their vote. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio.
Here.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Farman.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Councilmembers, if I might, once again, issue this statement that the deadline to respond to the 2020 census is now only nine days away, and there's still time to respond to the census. As we all know, the census will determine our representation in Congress, but it also ensures that North Carolina, Forsyth County, and particularly Winston-Salem will get our share, our fair share, of the billions of dollars of federal funding for local programs like road construction, emergency services, Medicaid, school lunch programs, and housing programs. Nearly forty percent of Forsyth County residents have not, that's not, responded to the census. And this can have a very significant impact on our local community. So once again, the deadline to respond is September 30th, 2020. You can go online, it's very easy to do. Remind everyone that the information is confidential, will not be released to anyone. You can go to, quote, my2020census.gov, my2020census.gov, and follow the prompts. So I urge you to please answer the census because we need you to be able to count on us, you and Forsyth County. Excuse me. Tonight's agenda of the city council is comprised of two parts, the consent agenda and the general agenda. The consent agenda have been, items on there have been unanimously recommended by committee of the city council, or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There will be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. The council would like to, I'd like to say that the general agenda will be following the consent agenda there. Councilmembers, are there any items that you would like to pull from the consent agenda?
C-12, C-13, and C-14.
Your motion on the ballots. So move.
Alan McIntosh.
Second, Clark.
Thank you, Councilmember McIntosh, Councilmember Clark. All those in favor of the motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda, we'll do a roll call. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Farman.
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous to approve the ballots. We go then to item C-12.
Item C-12, resolution adopting minimum conditions and requirements for the lease of restaurant space and union station located in the east ward, recommended by finance committee.
Councilmember Cipio.
Uh, yes. This has come through our committee process, but I'd like for Mr. Duquesne to share what this resolution is.
Duquesne, would you share the conditions that are being proposed for this resolution?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. So the item before you this evening sets minimum conditions for persons or parties who would like to lease space in union station for the purpose of restaurant. Some of the items are lease term, lease rates, footage, and city contribution, et cetera. So once this item is approved, staff will take these conditions back, will create a request for proposals that will be advertised. Hopefully, we could have that done and potentially have those proposals before the, before the finance committee for approval in a January timeframe. There'll be a build-out period depending on the needs of the person or parties who have proposed for the restaurant. And I think if we're, if we're fortunate and use our time and resources well, we could potentially have an open restaurant by August, September of next year.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Councilmember Cipio?
No, I just wanted the public to know that this is the process we're going to take and that anyone interested, if we're voting through this tonight, would need to make requests for proposals. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that process. Thank you.
Can I get a motion, please, from you?
Yes. With that, I move that we approve this resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Set, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All right, to the roll call, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Farman.
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Now, item C-13.
Item C-13, resolution against gun violence in the city of Winston-Salem, recommended by public safety committee.
Again, Councilmember Cipio.
Yes, I'd like Ms. Tasha Logan Ford to let the public know what this resolution is, please.
Ms. Ford, would you please summarize this action?
Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor Duane, Mayor Protem Adams, and members of the council. Item C-13 is a resolution addressing gun violence in the city of Winston-Salem. This item was originally brought before council during the August 17th meeting, where it was then referred back to committee for further discussion. On September 14th of the Public Safety Committee, the item was taken up for discussion with the members there and recommended before the full council. The resolution seeks to address the concerns that we have with rising gun violence in the community. Right now, we're currently on target to seize over a thousand weapons, firearms off of our streets, and gun violence continues to be a challenge in the community. The resolution is a way for us to publicly state that we want to support all the avenues that are afforded to us, working through law enforcement, working with our community members, and also working with our community to address gun violence. We want to make sure that we take an approach that is in collaboration with community, but also want to highlight that we do not tolerate or want to have gun violence arising in our community where all of our residents feel safe. But the item before you solidifies the decision of the council to make sure that we're supporting a number of collaborative efforts to address gun violence in the community.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Ford?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of this resolution.
Thank you. Second by...
Clark.
That's for Clark. Thank you very much. Any discussion? All right, to the roll call, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Farman.
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous. Now, item C-14.
Item C-14, ordinance amending section 74-16 of the city code related to street and sidewalk murals, recommended by Community Development Housing General Government Committee.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, we did approve this in our committee, but I think the public needs to understand what this ordinance amendment is. So I would ask Mr. Duquesne or Ms. Carmen to let the public know what this is and what this does.
All right, thank you. Assistant City Manager Duquesne.
Yes, sir. Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. The item before you changes the city code to delineate a process to be used for bringing street and sidewalk murals to our city streets and sidewalks. The process consists of several steps. It's the completion of an application, review by city staff. As long as the application is complete and staff reviews and recommends, that item would be brought then before the entire city council to either approve or deny the application for a street mural or sidewalk mural.
Any questions, Mr. Duquesne? Councilmember Cipio, are you ready for a motion?
Yes, sir. I move that we adopt this new process. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark, I believe. Any discussion? All right, roll call, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Farman. Thank you. That's unanimous. The council will now consider the general agenda, which is comprised of the following items. There's an item related to the street closing, an item related to the Juneteenth holiday, an item related to the financial assistance to the share corp, as well as our public comment period. The street closing item is listed as a public hearing. When the public hearing is called, persons who will be given an opportunity to speak virtually, no one wishes to speak, are closed to public hearing, and the city council will consider the item. We'll point out that written comments will be accepted on the public hearing items until 7:00 PM tomorrow, September 22nd. Written comments may be sent to the city clerk's office at PO Box 2511, Winston-Salem 27102, or by email to sandrark@cityofws.org. Written comments of any will be forwarded to the mayor and members of the city council. And if desired, the appropriate city council member, based on written comments, can make a motion to reconsider an item at social meetings. The public comment period is a time set aside for citizens to voice their opinions that are on matters that are germane to city government. When the virtual comment period is called, each speaker will be given three minutes to comment and make comments, and the comment period will be limited to a total of thirty minutes. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed Tuesday at 9:00 AM, and again Wednesday at 9:00 PM. Of course, copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online at the city's website, and just click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Ms. King, would you read the first item, please?
Item G1, public hearing on a petition to propose an abandoned portion of an unnamed alley off of Marbury Street located in the south ward. Petition of LeAnn Hallward, recommended by Public Works Committee.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Has anyone signed up, Ms. Martin, to speak on this?
Mayor, we have two people here who only wanted to speak if anyone was in opposition, which no one is.
Okay. I don't think we have anyone in opposition to this item. So therefore, I'll close the public hearing, and this is in the south ward. It did come out of Public Works Committee, so I will defer to the council member from the south ward, Mr. Larson. Sorry, Ms. Bessie.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, fellow council members, I move approval of C1.
Second. Second by the chair of the Public Works Committee. Any discussion? All right, to the roll call, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Farman.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Larson. Item G2.
Item G2, resolution recognizing Juneteenth as a seating holiday, recommended by Community Development Housing General Government Committee, with three in favor and one abstaining.
Recognize the chairman of the General Government Committee, Mayor Protem Adams. If you are ready for a motion to get this on the floor.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I move for the acceptance of general agenda item two on the approval of Juneteenth as a holiday.
Second, McIntosh.
Second.
Thank you. Second, Councilmember McIntosh. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have comments.
Councilmember Cipio.
First of all, I'd like to ask us to think about this proposal. I have three major concerns. Number one, as written, it takes away the floating holiday, which has been used as, for Christmas Eve, by employees, and/or they can bank it. This, as proposed, is not an added benefit, but it takes away what our employees have become accustomed to. As also written, it's uncertain when it would be celebrated. Juneteenth is historically July, I mean, June the 19th. So to do that, I think we need more discussion on when it will be celebrated. Without rushing it through, I think we need to be more thoughtful about the effects on our employees and how we see it as a benefit to them. Secondly, we need a policy with criteria around paid holidays. This is one holiday that is about emancipation of African-Americans. In America and in this city, Cinco de Mayo is also celebrated for the emancipation of Mexicans. Again, another ethnic group. I believe we need to clearly write down what our expectations are when we grant paid holidays. What is the value and benefits to our employees? Third, I think my concern is I do not want us to deflect from the seriousness of emancipation and the legacy of slavery by ignoring how our city has progressed over the years with regards to diversity and discriminatory policies. It would seem somewhat hypocritical if we gave a holiday that celebrated emancipation without knowing how well we, as an employer, have dealt with our own employees. So I think it would be prudent for the council to understand how we have progressed on their departments, divisions in the city, where we don't have diversity, or the requirements for people of color are different than those who are traditionally in those departments. Are there departments where people of color traditionally are in the lower levels, and their pay is, is not comparable? We have, right now, undergoing an assessment of the culture in our fire department. And so it, I think we need to be very thoughtful about what we are going to do and what statements we make about giving out paid holidays to celebrate something when, in our own house, we may not be living up to a good standard. So I would like to make a motion to delay this action until we establish a policy on paid holidays and that we have an internal assessment among our employers regarding diversity and discrimination and any signs of oppression.
Councilmember Cipio offers a substitute motion to delay this item. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Councilmember Farman seconds the motion. We will vote on the substitute motion, which is to delay this item until certain conditions that were meant. Councilmember Clark had asked to be heard on this item. Councilmember Clark, you want to speak before we do the vote?
Yeah, actually, what I have to say will tie in well with what Ms. Cipio can say.
Go ahead.
I do think, my biggest concern from the beginning was that we did not create an additional holiday, but simply moved the floating to a fixed point. I do have concerns with adding additional holidays due to the cost. As Ms. Cipio pointed out, there are other ethnic groups that do not have holidays. They may want holidays as well, and I think we need to be very careful on the total number of holidays. A holiday creates roughly eighteen hours of unproductive time. And it's hard to put a dollar figure on that, but, but we got 2,600 employees times eight hours. You can do the math. Secondly, I do think we are changing the personnel policy, and I think we need input from our employees. They may well vote to, and I'm not sure how they were going to vote on this, although it was in the notes, we were going to solicit comments from them. They may select December 24th as the day to, to celebrate this, which is, which is the current date that the floater is typically put to. But while I have no obvious objections to the original one, I do think there's still enough questions that we don't need to ram this thing through, and we need to think very thoughtfully on how we do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. The substitute motion is to delay this item. Councilmember Larson wants to speak to the substitute motion.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think emancipation is an incredibly important story in American history, and certainly Cinco de Mayo is important to Latino history. We've, we've got to sort of decide how to target our themes and the things we want to talk about. The, the idea of celebrating Juneteenth, that we don't even, right now, to say what day it's going to be on. Is it going to be on the 19th? Or is it going to be a three-day weekend? I think a little uncertain about all of that. But more important to me is what, what are we accomplishing besides sending all our employees home? I'd like to think that we come out of this with some consensus of trying to elaborate on a story that's important and hopefully important nationally. Traditionally, we're following national, or state, or county leads on these things. We get holidays that are generally widely accepted. I'm a little concerned that Juneteenth is not widely even understood among the population as to what it's about. Doesn't mean we can't educate, and we can certainly try to do that. But I have a concern as we, as we look through how we determine what's a holiday and how we want to talk about it. For example, I'd suggest it, and I would still suggest, that we add either Cinco, June 19th as Freedom Day, or June 19th as Emancipation Day. I understand the 1st of January is oftentimes declared Emancipation Day based on the Emancipation Proclamation. But emancipation occurs over multiple dates, and it's really not until the 13th Amendment on December 6th, 1865, that we have total emancipation in the United States as a whole of freeing all slaves that exist and ending that tradition in the United States. And I think that's an important ending date. This, the Juneteenth is an important date, and I think we ought to commemorate it in some way, but I'm wondering if we're ready to do that just yet.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Councilmember Farman had her hand up first, Mayor.
Oh, okay. I'll defer to Councilmember Farman then.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I definitely did my homework assignment. I studied it. I'm aware of everybody's concerns and everything. One thing that I did do was, when this item came up, even before it came to the agenda, we had discussion about it, was to go back and actually ask the city employees, what is it that they wanted? What is it that their desires were to be? Because we readily always look for citizen input on everything, but we're not looking at the employee input as it relates to what it is that they want, because this is a city holiday that we're implementing. And with some of them, you know, they were very hesitant about even speaking on it because of, they thought I was going to have backlash towards them or whatever, and some of them was in agreement, some of them weren't. I think that when we look at doing these type of things, because like I explained to a lot of the city employees here, I would be the first one to say, this is not going to affect me next year because I'll be gone in December. But it will affect them, so did we take into consideration what it is that they wanted and surveyed them to see if they were willing to give up their one floating holiday for Juneteenth? And again, looking at, does that open up a door for other nationalities to want to celebrate their heritage and what they come from and their background? Because I'm, I'm, I'm there with you, Mayor Protem Adams. I hear you, I feel you. I know what you're saying. I'm there with you too, Councilmember Cipio. I hear the education piece and the whole nine yards. I just want to make sure that whatever we vote on to do as it relates to the employees in city of Winston-Salem, we're doing what's best for them and not our own selves, trying to do something, but to make sure that we elevate it to not just this holiday, but something greater than what the national people are doing or what they're doing in other counties, to make it count for us in the city of Winston-Salem.
Thank you. Now, Mayor Protem Adams.
Thank you all for your comments. I believe that African-Americans deserve a holiday. I believe that if other cities have already done it, that's why we ask after benchmark them. I, I just sometimes, like I said, why is it that when it comes to Winston-Salem, we always kind of stumble or, and I believe in being very, you know, thoughtful in our processes and what we do. But it amazes me, again, how we just wanted to designate it as a holiday. And yes, a floating holiday, that's how holidays get picked or designated as you go forward, because they're in the budget. Councilmember Robert Clark, we do have, what, roughly over 2,000 something employees?
2,600, I think.
And we have over 250,000 in the city. Again, we look to other cities and counties that have already done this. This is nothing new. This is not going to wake up tomorrow and everybody's just going to go crazy. And I understand about the floating holiday. But as I've said before, out of the holidays that we have, and the importance of the event, why it's needed, I, I struggle to try to, and it's just me, maybe? I struggle to understand why is it when it comes to black stuff or African-American things or, or events or situations, we struggle with that? And why we always want to sometime, I remember what we went through to get through Martin Luther King. I remember I was at those meetings in City Hall. But I always wonder why is it that, I can understand discussion, disagreement, whatever, but it always boggles me when it comes to something that's not for the majority, that we stumble with that. We, we struggle with it. And, you know, whatever this council decides, you know, it's you. But I've worked, like I said, for a corporation that celebrated St. Patrick's Day as a holiday in the company across the country, the world. And because of what we did here in Winston and other cities, they saw the trend and they moved it before all what's going on now years ago, from St. Patrick's Day to Martin Luther King's birthday. And that didn't mean that all of their 300-something thousand employees agreed with it, but they moved it because it was the right thing to do. And those that want to reference us with my Latino/Hispanic constituents and others, Cinco de Mayo is about what it went down in Mexico. I'm talking about what's going, what went here in America, basically. It's a holiday. It's a renowned holiday, but most people in America don't take off for that day. So all I'm asking you to do is, again, this is in respect of the fact of what America did to a race of people. We deserve a holiday, a day, an acknowledgement day. And as I said before, Mayor and the members of the council, the details will be worked out. The details will be worked out.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Adams. Councilmember Bessie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I intend to vote against the substitute motion and vote in favor of acting on designating a holiday this evening. I recognize that I'm closing in on the end of my service on the city council, so ultimately, this decision will be made by those who are elected to the city council in November. However, I want to make clear that I think that this is an important recognition of a central part of American history and our community's history. This is not about a particular ethnic holiday. Cinco de Mayo is a Mexican holiday, and it's not even, uh, the big one there. Uh, this is about recognizing, uh, the beginning of a correction of one of the great injustices in American history. It is an opportunity to teach history. It is an opportunity to teach, uh, the process of emancipation, the fact that it came to different parts of the country, uh, and different parts of the former Confederacy at different times, that it was followed by the fight, uh, to pass the Thirteenth and Fourteenth Amendments, uh, that, uh, it was the beginning of a process, not the end, but that it is central to our history, to our identity as a nation, and to the improvement of our efforts to be the, the nation that our founding documents promised we would be. I don't think that we can confuse the adoption of a history teaching opportunity and a symbolic commitment with the important substantive work that has to go on. And I agree with Councilmember Cipio that the substantive work is necessary. But I don't think that we have to wait for the completion of every one of those substantive steps to join cities and states across the country, including our sister city Greensboro, in determining that this event is one that deserves recognition in Winston-Salem as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bessie. Councilwoman McIntosh?
Yeah, I, I appreciate comments. Lots of, obviously lots of thoughts went into this. And Councilmember Parment, I appreciate you stopping by and have a one-on-one conversation. I think we're heading towards a national Juneteenth holiday in a much greater rate of speed than we, than we got to, to MLK as a, as a national holiday. I think we'll end up with this as a date. And I think we have a chance to, you know, to join this relatively early among the states who are committing or cities that are committing to support it. I think our weight is while not huge, certainly helps push it towards that direction. Uh, so I think we'll end up with a Juneteenth holiday on the same date that other municipalities and states are celebrating anyway. So I'm, I'm going to support the original motion.
Thank you, Councilman McIntosh. We do have a substitute motion on the floor to delay the action on this particular resolution. We'll go to the roll call. This is on the substitute motion. Those in favor of the, of the substitute motion would vote yes. Councilwoman Larson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bessie?
No.
Councilwoman Cipio? Yes. Sorry, I was muted.
Mayor Protem Adams?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
No.
Councilmember Parment?
No.
Councilmember Parment votes no. I have five noes, three ayes, so the substitute motion fails. We're now back to the original motion, which was to approve the, um, holiday as was recommended by the General Government Committee.
Mayor, could I have a count on that? Do we have a, could we have a recount on that? I was getting four to four.
No, you got.
And Bessie, Adams, Taylor, McIntosh, and Parment voting no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So we're back to the original motion. Uh, and the motion is to approve the holiday as recommended by the General Government Committee. So your vote on this one be to approve the resolution. Councilwoman Larson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bessie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Parment?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous to approve the creation of a, of a holiday for Juneteenth. Thank you very much. Item G three?
Item G three, consideration of items relating to finance, financial assistance to share co-op, recommended by Community Development Housing General Government Committee, with three in favor and one opposed.
Uh, this did come out of the Housing and General Government Committee. I would recommend, uh, excuse me, recognize, Mayor Protem Adams, if you'd like to make a motion to get this annoying.
I move that we accept, um, item G three.
Thank you. Sir, sir, Councilwoman Cipio, I believe.
Yeah.
Is there a discussion on this item?
Yes. Yeah, um, I voted against this at a committee. I'll vote against it tonight. I have a number of issues with it, but the main one I have is this store is located between the West Salem and Ardmore neighborhoods. Those are both primarily white, middle-class neighborhoods, and I don't see why we're asking the taxpayers to subsidize a grocery store in that location. I think it's a poor location for the clientele it's proposed, uh, proposed to service. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Bessie, I see your hand.
Yes, uh, this is actually in Councilmember Larson's awards. I'm sure he'll want to speak, but I would like to correct one misimpression. Um, the, uh, the eastern side, uh, in particular of the Ardmore neighborhood is more diverse. Uh, and the Peters Creek Corridor in particular, uh, has, uh, some, uh, communities that tend to be, uh, in greater need, uh, and, uh, have challenges, uh, in, uh, in travel to grocery stores in many cases. Uh, so it's not as bad a location as, um, uh, one might, might think based on, uh, the impression that I'm sure Councilmember Clark shares with many people. Uh, I, I do think that, um, uh, it is important that we work to, uh, revitalize, uh, that corridor. It's important not just for the immediate area, uh, but for the, uh, larger city, uh, and that, uh, having a full-service grocery store in that area will be an important part of building it up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bessie. Councilwoman Larson?
Yes, thank you. Um, you know, a food desert has been identified in this area, and it may not have anything to do with, uh, racial construction. It has to do with people that are food deprived, particularly of nutritious wholesome foods. You can get fast food at the local seven-eleven, what have you, but to get fresh vegetables, to get good bread, to get good food, there's no grocery store close by that meets that. Uh, this, this location was actually carefully studied. Early in our discussions, you may recall, uh, we actually helped commission a survey to be done as to where the best location would be, that would be most effective, not only to serve the public and serve an audience, but in fact, give it the best chance for economic success. And the Peters Creek Corridor was identified certainly as a primary corridor that could, was accessible, but also in need of the services that we were providing. The grocery store that had been promised, uh, for years up on the ballpark area has never come to fruition. Uh, some food lines have moved all the way down to Oliver's Trace, uh, is no longer available. And this, this particular location then falls in right in the middle of all of this to provide a good service and a good location. Uh, it's been carefully thought through, and I think over the years, it's only been proven to be more and more correct as they've worked through. This has been a carefully constructed project. What we're asking the city to do is about twelve percent of the total project cost of this. Uh, they've been busy raising money. You've seen the list of donors that have been involved in this, uh, project from the get-go. We're going to put some money in a mason jar, put it on the shelf, and when the fundraising's finished, uh, we'll pull it down and we'll spend the money to make this project work. The city should be a partner in this. This is exactly the sort of thing the city should be doing. Thank you.
Councilwoman Larson? Do have a motion and a second to approve this item going to the roll call. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Councilwoman Clark.
Councilwoman Bessie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Uh, Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Parment?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes seven to one. Councilmember Clark voting no. Thank you very much. Now go to, uh, item G four.
Item G four, public comment period.
So again, as the time, uh, once per month, that the city council invites citizens to address us on matters that are germane to city government. Again, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and, uh, we will set aside thirty minutes for the total time. First person that has signed up is Rachel Fern.
Hello.
Yes, if you'd give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rachel Fern. My address is six eleven Oak Summit Road, Winston-Salem, two seven one oh five.
Go ahead.
Uh, I volunteer with Housing Justice Now here in Winston-Salem. For months, I've watched a steadily increasing number of evictions go through our court system. I've spoken with probably hundreds of tenants who are facing many of the same challenges as everyone else is during this pandemic, except they're having those challenges compounded exponentially by the eviction process. Hardworking residents of this city are dismissed from their jobs after being exposed to COVID nineteen, which puts them on the fast track to eviction court. For example, a restaurant worker I spoke with ended up in eviction court after her job laid off and replaced most of their staff during a quarantine period after one staff member tested positive for COVID nineteen. A mother I talked to at court could not return to her job in an elder care facility after a family member became very ill and tested positive. Tonight, that woman is worried about the health of her loved one, frightened about the future of her job, and in less than forty-eight hours, sheriff's deputies will be at her door to lock her and her family out of their home. This is a crisis, and it's happening every day in this city while committees are formed, meetings are held, and surveys are conducted. What I'm asking is where are the resources for these people? Why is Winston-Salem the only city in North Carolina without a housing fund? At last week's Public Safety Committee meeting, there was discussion about the city's growing gun violence problem and how to address it through additional law enforcement initiatives. A very questionable survey was referenced multiple times throughout the meeting, but for decades, credible studies clearly indicate that crime is reduced when poverty is reduced. Investing in community and to reduce poverty is the evidence-based answer to crime reduction, and providing housing and resources for communities is extremely relevant in a conversation about gun violence. It is a slap in the face to taxpayers that after months of peaceful protests without violence or destruction, the city is funding a civil disobedience task force instead of providing housing and rent relief to people who desperately need it. We would like this city to divert funds from the excessive police budget and provide affordable housing and rent relief for our community. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Duck McManus? Yes, if you'd say your name and address for the record.
My name is Duck McManus, and I live at one thirty Secret Garden Lane, apartment six.
Go ahead.
I'm calling to raise my concern over the coronavirus emergency supplemental fund, which is a CARES Act federal grant from the Department of Justice, Justice, that WSPD requested on May twentieth of this year and then received over half a million on May twenty-ninth. This fund is supposedly intended to support public safety across the nation during the pandemic, but I have my doubts over its effectiveness in addressing the pandemic, and here's why. One, none of this fund has been intended for nor used for coronavirus testing. Two, this fund, over half a million, is not reported in the WSPD budget presented by the city of Winston-Salem. This is highly suspicious, and it makes me wonder how many other grants or funds are not reported in the WSPD budget. Furthermore, it makes me wonder why city council then approved a one percent salary increase for public safety with CARES Act funds recently. Why is coronavirus relief being interpreted as financial support for policing our community? Three, this fund, according to a report on how is it, how it is intended to be used, is intended to combat the expected increase in crime due to the job losses and reduction of officers on the street. Instead of deciding that crime will rise when the economy crashes, city council, please reallocate the increasing funds to public, please reallocate the increasing funds to public safety back to the economy for securing our jobs. There are currently a total of seven hundred and twelve employees in WSPD, but there are almost a quarter of a million residents who need money reallocated to them in Winston-Salem. Four, lastly, this fund is intended for use for the Civil Disobedience Response Team equipment, which includes shields, barricades, gloves, passive protector tools, helmets, shin and arm protectors, gas mask canisters, gas mask filters, Magnum foggers, and Magnum fogger carriers. Why are you spending coronavirus relief funds on military-style equipment as if the equipment you already have is no longer functional? Again, none of this over half million has been spent on coronavirus testing. Not only has this over half million of funding to WSPD not been discussed nor transparently shared by city council in meetings nor in the WSPD budget forum on August thirty-first, but city council and manager Garrity continue to pour more money in support to WSPD as if they need more than the seventy-eight million budget, plus federal grants and other donations. As financial support and funding for WSPD grows, we will see crime increase and the militarization of the police gain traction. Please end this by listening to your constituents right now, investing in refunding our community's needs such as housing, healthcare,
Thank you very much.
the economy, jobs, and anti-poverty resources.
Thank you very much. Nia Sadler?
Hey, this is Nia Sadler of thirteen twenty-five Camden Place Court, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, and two seven one oh three. So I'm calling about C thirteen on the agenda, which was the resolution against gun violence in Winston-Salem. This item was brought to the agenda by Annette Cipio in the last meeting before it was sent back to the Public Safety Committee. However, the public's voice on this item has been based on a faulty and biased survey and distributed by some of the council members and manipulatively shared in the Public Safety Committee meeting last week. So I demand that you never share the results of ninety biased surveys representing a quarter of a million Winston-Salem residents as a way of saying that seventy percent of the responses asked for an increase in police presence. So there was a forty-nine-day occupation movement against police and deputy brutality that lasted from July fifteenth to September first. We do not need more support for the police. In the resolution, it states that major strategic focus area is safe and secure, community of which public safety is the foundation upon which any successful city is built. Absent this, it is difficult to attract businesses, residents, or visitors, which in turn create the economy vitality that sustains our community. In other words, city council prioritizes the protection of wealth through police force, which negates the care that is necessary for sustaining and growing our community. As councilmember Taylor stated in last week's Public Safety Committee meeting, we can't simply police and arrest. This is true, but this is what you are approving via this solution. You have approved to support the WSPD to utilize all laws and resources, including collaborations with the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office, as well as state and federal resources to reduce gun violence in our communities. This means simply that you approve to police and arrest, not address root problems that you could and should do by reallocating the seventy-eight million dollar police budget. In summary, the resolution exists to guard the city's wealth from the community, reinforces continued monetary support for WSPD at a time that the community is demanding help with housing, economic, and health resources during a pandemic, and threatens to continue the expansion of police across, of policing across WSPD and FCSO into state and federal resources, which could lead to further militarization of our city. Additionally, whatever costs you're worried about, about spending on Juneteenth could be put towards a reparations initiative, a reparations initiative in Forsyth County. I yield my time.
Ally Jones?
Hi, welcome to my classroom. Uh, my name is Ally Jones. I live at two seven seven zero Laguna Avenue, Winston-Salem, two seven one zero three. I'm a resident of southwest Winston. Uh, my partner and I moved to Winston-Salem this June. We were drawn here because of its diversity and progressiveness. From outside, it seemed like a place where people are more important than politics. Since arriving, I have been disappointed to find how entrenched in old ways our city actually is. If this summer has shown us anything, it is that we as a nation must change the way we protect and care for our people, especially black and brown people, populations often harmed by the way our systems are constructed and funded. This is not old news, but the pasta, pot of injustice finally boiling over. That being said, we cannot wait for the federal government to shift its priorities, nor the state. We have an opportunity to begin moving away from a system that punishes into one that uplifts here at home, setting an example for all of North Carolina and beyond. It is well documented that cities with programs of uplift for their black citizens have a reduced need for policing. Others will speak on why black citizens are a greater part of our imprisoned population. It has nothing to do with being a more criminal element, and so I will. It has nothing to do with being a more criminal element, and so I will focus on how we can support rather than punish. A wonderful program Winston already has in place is Successful Outcomes After Release. Thanks to SOAR, formerly incarcerated citizens of Winston are able to obtain job and life skill training, education, and basic needs to improve their chance at a better life away from the criminal justice system. However, last year, only eight people were able to be served. Of those eight, six went on to full-time gain full employment with the city. Without access to SOAR, we continue a cycle of recidivism. When people are released, they face a lack of housing, lack of access to food, and most importantly, a lack of access to not just quality employment, but employment, period. Where do we expect these men and women to go? How do we expect them to grow and become contributors if we don't allow chances for not just redemption, but rehabilitation and reentry? Imagine a city where instead of spending money on pursuit and punishment, we invested in rebirth and growth. A city where instead of this program serving eight people, we served all 128 that qualified this past year, where we transformed people from dependent to independent and into taxpayers that continue to help our city flourish into its maximum potential, paying forward the cost of their trading. This is just one of the many programs that move us toward prevention and quality instead of reinforcing it. A community is only as strong as our most needy citizen. Therefore, it is imperative we raise all ships to build a strong Winston-Salem. This cannot happen by the good of people's hearts alone, and it is not the responsibility of nonprofits or the private sector. Reallocating funding from the bloated $78 million police budget towards programs like SOAR, Youth Build, and Restorative Justice is a necessary and humane step we can take today. A community speaks its priorities with its budget. Mayor and council members, I ask you tonight, what are you going to do to tell us that the people are who matter most? Thank you.
Miranda Jones?
Good evening. Miranda Jones, 405 Corona Street. Dear Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem BD Adams and City Council, I affirm and stand in solidarity with my comrade, um, both Ally and Nia, who are standing up for marginalized and historically oppressed black people in Winston-Salem. This thing called reparations is a hard concept to accept, and it's incomprehensible only when it comes to black people. The concept is contemptible to some, reprehensible and indigestible. A Juneteenth holiday that largely benefits white city employees, but what about the black low-paid employees for the city and who live in the city? You must think higher in terms of justice. Nonetheless, we make excuses. Problems that have dogged black people since forever become worse. Lack of education, inadequate housing, incarceration, and lack of opportunity remain. Mayor joins in your most recent interview with the Chronicle Live on September 14th of this year. You said, "When it comes to reparations, I've done the math. If we give every black person in Winston-Salem $5,000, it would cost in the billions of dollars, and the city of Winston-Salem simply doesn't have that kind of money." The irony is that so much more has been taken from black people here in Winston-Salem. When Haddad wrote, "You asking that Youth Build, a national and federally funded program, be restored and funded," you wrote back referencing the Winston-Salem College Guarantee Program, which allows high school graduates to attend Forsyth Tech. I don't recall you mentioning that it was BBNT and not the city who funded the program or mentioning political, potential barriers such as GPA requirement, or whether or not the students could still receive federal aid if they enroll under this program. It's a start, but it's simply not enough. So we ask that you stridently reinvigorate Youth Build, as many of my personal students may not make it across that graduation stage and are at great risk for crime. Same activity as the city council says it wants to prevent. We also ask that the $350,000 that Mayor Pro Tem BD Adams asked for for PK be approved. Is there mountains of evidence as a result of preventing a gap and trying to close one? Please do not deflect by saying this is a responsibility of the county, because the county doesn't appear to be voting in the interest of black people. This is reparations. We ask that the fire training center be located in the heart of black Winston-Salem as a form of reparations. The locations would address the barrier and be open to all. We're not asking for something unachievable. We're asking that you and the county invest in the people whose ancestors have built this city and many of whom have voted for, for, for you and, and people who, who are like you over time, viable candidates or not. We are the city of innovation after all, in the words of ancestor James Baldwin. "I can't believe what you say, because I see what you do. What will you do?" I yield.
Bob Maniza?
Hi, uh, my name is Bob Maniza. I live at 755 Southwest View Drive, Winston-Salem. I'm speaking in support of reallocating some of the $78 million police budget to programs of uplift in the black community. I did not come up with the words "program of uplift" in the back, black community. I think it was Martin Luther King Jr. who spoke them. The fact that we're still repeating those words after all these years shows how little progress has been made in the cause of freedom and equality for all people. The murder of George Floyd and the subsequent protests against police brutality of black people also shows that blacks are not yet treated as equals. Slavery ended in its literal sense, but the oppression of black citizens never ended. Jim Crow laws made it easy and profitable to use blacks as prison labor. Deliberate housing segregation made it easy to devalue and underserve black communities. The war on drugs was used dramatically and to dramatically increase the black prison population and destabilize black families. In 2016, white men had a 1 in 17 chance of going to prison. For black men, the odds were 1 in 3. In 2016, black men were 6.5% of the US population, but they were 40% of the prison population. On all markers of health and well-being, accumulated wealth, financial security, quality education, black citizens consistently suffered disadvantage. I'm glad to see Juneteenth pass, but I think we also need to choose to give more resources to the black community. So I support the call to reallocate some police funding to those two programs mentioned, Youth Build Winston-Salem and SOAR. Youth Build helps young people get their GED and life skills, and SOAR would help prison inmates, former prison inmates, become productive citizens. I understand that Youth Build is nationally funded, but the city needs to fund it as well. Revitalizing and fully funding these and other social programs is a way to provide reparations to the black community. Thank you.
Vivian Martitas, excuse me if I pronounced that wrong. Martitas?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members and guests. My name is Vivian Martitas, and I live in Coral Gables, Florida, but I'm representing Spin Scooters and my many colleagues from the state of North Carolina. I'm the Government Partnerships Manager at Spin, and we were recently awarded a permit to operate in Winston-Salem. And we currently serve several cities across North Carolina and operate in nearly 50 other cities. At a recent Public Works Committee meeting, city staff provided an update regarding the status of the micro-mobility program. The update included concerns vendors shared with the city regarding the nightly removal of scooters from the city's right-of-way. The vendor respects, the vendors respectfully asked the city council to consider removing that requirement. We understand safety is a top priority for the city, and Spin is committed to providing a safe, reliable, alternative form of transportation. As all of our scooters will be deployed at locations agreed upon with the city, we are confident that scooters will not be left in the right-of-way in poorly lit areas or otherwise in any manner to compromise pedestrian safety during non-operating hours. Additionally, scooters will be remotely disabled at 9:00 PM, so they cannot be rented by the public, therefore ensuring compliance. Requiring nightly pickups will dramatically increase the cost of a scooter operation and jeopardize the viability of a program. We propose that each evening at the end of service time, our operations specialist will do a full market sweep to rebalance all of our scooters. This process includes picking up low battery scooters, replacing them with fresh ones, and moving mis-parked scooters to safe, approved locations. Unlike others in the industry, Spin staff consists of internal W2 workforce that are dedicated to providing a safe scooter offering. If the nightly pickups requirement remains, Winston-Salem would be the only city in the United States that requires nightly pickups. Charlotte, North Carolina allows operators to leave scooters out overnight due to our operational proof of excellence in our two-year history with them. Currently, we disable the scooters at 9:00 PM there. Durham, North Carolina and Duke University originally required the nightly removal of scooters, but offered limited hours of operation. Both have amended their permit requirements to allow scooters to be disabled each night rather than be retrieved, and they have also expanded to 24-hour service. Since the transition to leave out scooters and overnight hours, there has not been a measurable uptick in accidents or complaints. Additionally, the city of Raleigh has a pickup requirement in its current contract, but the city and program office are not enforcing it, and the operating vendors are allowed to disable the scooters each night rather than retrieve them. According to the city's transportation director, Michael Moore, they will make that a permanent change in the upcoming RFQ. Spin is committed to working with the city, and we ask for a six-month trial period, which allows scooters to remain overnight. Council can revert to the current regulations if we do not provide acceptable service. Thank you for your consideration.
Phillip Carter?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Pro Tem Adams, and other council members. First, I'd like to say I'd like to see that $78 million police budget be reallocated and be reallocated towards the community engagement, and it be reformed with citizens' input. Also, I'd like to see some money put forth as it relate to the mediation, eviction mediation program. As it relates to this Juneteenth holiday, which is a farce in my opinion. I note that Madam Pro Tem Adams and Councilman Bessie spoke of what other cities are doing. Well, right here in North Carolina, in Asheville, where they have a seven-seat council, two blacks, they have passed forth a resolution and created a reparations committee. I would expect this council to do likewise, seeing we have four blacks who are Democrats along with seven other Democrats. Now, if we're going to be innovative, if we're going to do what other cities do, Mr. Bessie and Madam Pro Tem Adams, let's work on that. If we can come up with money to provide 12% to projects, give assistance to restaurants in, in Union Station, then let us come up with money to help those that are being evicted. Let us come up with money to start a reparations program that will benefit not only the citizens, the employees of the city, but every other African-American in this city. That is what we are owed. I would hope that you would consider that, Mr. Mayor. Take the charge on that, as other mayors in Chicago and Asheville have done. It is time for us to stop posturing and begin to do the work of serving the people. Again, I'm a member of Housing Justice Now, and we look to you all to revise some type of safety net for the citizens that are falling through the cracks due to no fault of their own. Thank you.
Cheryl Harry?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Jones. I'm Cheryl Harry, uh, 4524 Princess Drive. Uh, Mayor Jones, Mayor Pro Tem Adams, city council members. First, I'd really like to thank you for your vote to make the ending of slavery, which is a milestone event in American history, a time to pause, reflect, and honor the will of a people, both black and white, who made the sacrifice for freedom for all. Juneteenth is the country's longest-running observance of the abolition of slavery, and it speaks to the core values of our nation, which are liberty and justice for all. And I quote, "Holidays don't merely testify to the values of a nation. They engrain those values in us. They teach us who and what matters, what to remember, and what to forget." So this evening, I thank you on behalf of the hundred of, hundreds of volunteers and thousands of citizens who have participated in this emancipation celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Ben Kreider, Kreider?
Oh, yes, thank you. Uh, my name is Ben Greider. I live at 175 Brown Dale Street. I want to comment on the committee, uh, Community Investment Review Committee. This committee has been appointed by city council to propose how 1 million of the city's budget will be allocated to the community efforts. Ever in the last week's Public Safety Committee meeting, it seemed that multiple council members stated that the committee isn't focused or that the city council didn't do them service in preparing them for this task. Uh, and this committee seems to lack expertise on the current grassroots efforts against police brutality. Uh, in the same Public Safety Committee, uh, meeting, the multiple members inquired about the WSPD statistics on crime response and trends. Should these inquiries have been part of the conversation about, um, the allocation of these funds sooner than now? And should these statistics been available, um, for the public as well? But also for the Community Investments Review Committee, uh, which is supposedly at work on reallocating funds to anti-poverty initiatives that would address these crime preventions. And when asked about any measurements for efficiency for this committee, none were provided. Can you better explain how this committee, uh, has been prepared to recommend the use of this $1 million for anti-poverty initiatives? And can you provide any examples or evidence based on research or similar recommendations of budget amounts towards anti-poverty initiatives? Um, as the deadline for this committee's recommendation is approaching, October 1st, can you provide any updates on this work? And ultimately, can you implement a transparent and public means to measure the efficiency of the committee's recommendation? So basically, I'm concerned by this dismissiveness and disappointment shared by council members in the last week's Public Safety Committee meeting on the topic of this, because this trade a gap in the city council's ability to inform, collaborate, and incorporate the vision and ideas of the public. City council and city manager, I implore you to listen to our community and do your research on how to, and I quote from a city council member, "Not keep missing the target." I'm trying to help the community with housing, healthcare, and economic improvement and mobility and, uh, care in the present. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right, I'll close the public comment period. Councilmembers, is there a motion to adjourn? So move. Second. Thank you. Thank you. Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Adams, and second by Councilmember Larson to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed to adjourning? We are adjourned. Thank you, councilmembers.